Good morning.
I will move to approve the minutes of August 22nd. I wasn't here, but I was able to review them online. Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Okay, do we have any public comment regarding any pending resolutions today? Okay, next, we are going to move on to our proclamation resolution, and I'm going to read it here. Hold on. We have a resolution of proclamation proclaiming August 31st as overdose awareness day in Medina County, whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized globally to acknowledge those whose lives have been lost and to raise awareness about risks of overdose and to acknowledge the grief felt by families, friends, and communities when remembering those who have died. This day also aims to publicly challenge the stigma associated with substance abuse and reminds us that no one should feel shame at the death of someone from this disease. In 2020, Medina County recorded more than 278 drug-related emergency room visits resulting in 42 deaths, shattering the lives of families and friends and devastating the community. Medina County remains committed to raising awareness surrounding overdose morbidity and mortality by reducing stigma through education prevention, treatment, and recovery support. This day is an opportunity to stand beside those who have lost loved ones and those who are diligently working towards recovery and to remind them that they are supported, deserving of dignity, and respect, and worthy of recovery. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio hereby proclaims August 31st, 2023 as overdose awareness day in Medina County.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Would Phillip and Stephanie like to come up?
Can I picture them? We'd like you guys to say a few words.
Okay.
Do you want to put that down?
Yeah.
It's always weird.
And then I'll have you guys photographing.
You've been here before?
I'll have you look at me first, and then Sarah will take hers after me.
Ready? All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you do this well, Stephanie, we won't have to speak at all.
Thanks so much. Stephanie Robinson, I'm the founding executive director of Hope Recovery Community. I'm also a person in long-term recovery, which means that I haven't had drugs, alcohol, or engaged in eating disorder behaviors for over 15 years. And I just want to thank the commissioners and thank Medina County for this acknowledgement. While we are still losing people to overdose, I will say that Medina County will report a reduction in overdose fatalities for the first time in several years in 2022. So what we are doing is working, but one death is too many, right? I mean, these deaths are preventable. Ohioans 4,900, nearly 5,000, lost their lives last year. Over 107,000 across the country. Still work to be done. So, but we acknowledge this day. We hold this day in honor of those lost. And I would invite everyone to join us this Thursday at 6:30 at the Brunswick Church of NAS, right on 303, right next to the post office, as we honor those that we've lost. September is National Recovery Month, but this last day in August is a day we just hold in grief for the families and the communities that are impacted. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything, but now that you you mention it.
Always glad to have you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. On behalf of the Adam Board, you know, we are very appreciative of the partnership with Hope Recovery Community. It's because of their work. It's because of their diversity. It's because of their passion. And, I mean, really, we're able to help fund, and they put the programming out there. As Stephanie mentioned, we see the overdose numbers going down, and that's fantastic, but a lot of work to be done. I mean, sometimes it's, I have to remember, I mean, people sometimes that are involved with this are families that are afflicted by this disease may have started when they go to the dentist or they have an injury. I mean, it's football season. We go out there and we watch football. And the people who get injured, and then they go and they connect and they hit, and sometimes with those pain pills. It's just that automatic. Now you have that neuro, you have that disease, and it's awake. And then there's that battle. So, really, we fight hard. We work. We appreciate all the collaboration, the partnership. It can't be done without the support of the commissioners, the voters, the levy. When you talk about the levy that's coming up, Hope Recovery Community is a main focus of what we're able to do with your dollars. So, we appreciate it, and thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming. Okay, next up, we have resolutions, and first up is county engineer, and we have Dan here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning.
I've got two resolutions for your consideration today. The first is approving the final plat for the Cobblestone Park subdivision Phase 4B, and the second is necessity close various county roads for road projects. And then our weekly points.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Dan. Next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to obtain an easement for the substation road water main improvement project, and the second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with Dixon Engineering for professional design services to rehab Geyer Water Tower.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
I'm losing it.
That's fine. You can say.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Holly Mira.
Good morning.
We have two resolution. On our personal changes resolution, we have a new hire in sanitary, start date correction in transit, eight rate increases, four at county home, one at sanitary, one at job and family services, one in human resources, and one in IT. We have two leave of absence, one at county home and one in IT, and we have three resignations, two in job and family services, and one in office for older adults, one retirement in transit. Second resolution is amending the table of organization for Medina County IT Department.
Move to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Discussion?
I do have one thing I would like to mention. It's probably not a discussion on the resolutions, but this week's edition of Crane's Cleveland Business came out, top 100 employers in northeast Ohio. And did you know Medina County is, I think, number 83 on that list? And we do it with an HR staff of four people.
So awesome.
I thought, looked through that list, and I thought, I wonder how many operations on that list, particularly in the public sector, are so lean and still very well run. So, just an opportunity to acknowledge the work that's done in that office.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Debbie Kylie from Job and Family Services.
Good morning. Just one resolution for your consideration this morning. It's a resolution amending the social services policy and fiscal plan for JFS.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess I get most of the rest of the show here. We have 12 resolutions for your consideration today, the first one of which is our standard appropriation increases. A couple bigger numbers on here. The children's services are pulling some money over for levy funds. Then the sanitary engineer is getting some bump ups there. Our second resolution is amending by transferring appropriations. Some of the, most of these are setting up some of what we talked about in the first resolution, and then you have the Board of DD going through and doing their necessary moves. The third resolution is expense adjustments for various funds. We have one that was paid from maintenance for the courthouse, and then we have one that was a courthouse expense that's going over to the 911 towers. Our fourth resolution is revenue adjustments. This one is because we are receiving into the general fund the monthly allowances coming from the county home, so we move those over on a routine basis. Our fifth resolution is cash transfers. This is bringing cash over to the 911 towers where we had a rather large maintenance requirement, as well as some money for the prisoner transportation. Sixth resolution is our cash transfers for the county home levy. This is bringing some cash over for our county home. Seventh resolution is our purchase of 6,600 gallons of regular gas. As usual, Port's petroleum is coming in as the lowest at $256.6 a gallon. Our eighth resolution is a sub grant for ODJFS to begin taking over our family and children's first council administration provisions. Our ninth resolution is to re-up leases for the sheriff's take control program. Importantly, these are paid for by a yearly grant that comes over from the juvenile courts. So, there are four vehicles. We're just renewing the leases on those. Tenth resolution is accepting an application for a procurement card for the adult probation department. The 11th resolution we have is advertising for bids for the CDBG-funded Montville Township Phase 3 of this project. So, we had actually begun our advertisements on August 11th, but we want to just kind of continue that so that we get the bids necessary for the project. On finally, our last resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,265,926.44, and as always, copies of the bills are kept at the auditor's office for anybody's perusal.
Move to approve the 12 resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our department updates, and we have Stacy Malakar here from MCBDD.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am excited to be here. Today, I want to introduce a few folks to you. We have talked about with the state rule about now legislating that we have to have a person with developmental disabilities on the board. And we've talked about the different things that we've done. So today, I'm proud to introduce to you some folks that have participated in our first annual Leadership Academy. And this really came out of the fact that people with developmental disabilities, they want more opportunities in their community to share their ideas, to give their opinions, to have an impact on their lives and other people. And so, we're trying to give them a little bit of practice so they can do that. So, the Leadership Academy, we started that in March of this year. It's a six-month training that we developed, and it's about their leadership abilities, their advocacy abilities, and fine tuning those. We don't need to build them. We just need to fine tune them. They have them. They attended outside events and activities as part of their coursework. The different topics that they delved into, understanding leadership, roles and responsibilities, personal leadership profile, communication and listening, problem solving, interview skills, and different types of leadership opportunities and goal settings. And I'm very excited. Our inaugural class has just been phenomenal. So, I want to just take a minute to introduce some of you guys, kind of give a wave for me. I'll introduce you. I've got Adina Kohler here, Bill Peters, sorry, Bill, Logan Detweiler, and Tyler Racy. So, those are our folks.
Thank you for coming. We're so happy to have you.
Yeah. And Adina would like to say a few words.
Yeah, you want to hear me?
You want to? Come on up front. At least come on over here. I will say that Adina, before COVID, was working in our administrative office. One of her jobs, working on filing and administrative work. So, she's got some skills, right?
I'm getting there.
That's all right.
I just can't really speak through the microphone.
That's all right.
We can hear you. Yes.
You can hear me.
Yeah.
Okay, so when I first started, I can't, when I first heard about it, I was really excited. I really wanted to use my advocacy skills, which I am a big strength, strength in my advocacy skills, but I know there's, there's always room for improvement. So, when I started the academy, I wanted to, it really helped me learn to build my communication skills and not be afraid to speak up for myself and for others. So, yeah, I just wanted, like, our D committee, we have hopes and dreams, just like anybody else. So.
Well, thank you so much. We're so glad you could say.
Thanks, Adina. Adina, yeah. And we do have some folks on internal committees that we have right now. So, you know, the hope is, and I know, I think Logan, you're working on, your goal is to be on the fair board, right? Yeah. So, so we've got some, we're moving in the right direction, some goals, some aspirations.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you for the recognition.
I can't miss the opportunity. Also, recommend Leadership Medina County, the signature program. As you know, actually Courtney Jordan, one of your employees is in the current class.
Yeah.
This year.
We're very excited. It's going to be a challenge with transportation and that, but yeah, and I know she's really excited, too.
I know. So, we'll continue furthering that communication, and we get more and more individuals involved in the program. It's great.
Great.
Back row, thank you for coming, too.
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we have public comment. Does anybody have any public comment today?
Okay, we are going to move in discussion session, and first up, we're going to bring up Chris Jacob because we are going to talk about the EMA building project.
Good.
All right, just a quick update. We, as you know, we opened bids several weeks ago for the renovation and expansion of the EMA facility on Heatherhedge. Unfortunately, the single bid that was received came in significantly over the bid estimate. Therefore, this board rejected that bid. We're now in the midst of working with the project architect to redo the bid specifications, modify the scope, I believe, and prepare an additional and hopefully more accurate estimate of the cost of that project. Once that is received, and I hope to have something by the end of this week, I will present it to you for review and approval to move forward, hopefully, with a rebid process for that project. I think we had tentatively talked about getting a legal notice and advertisement prepared and posted by, on or about the 5th of September. I had sent a message to the EMA director asking if she could contact the architect to get an update on his efforts to redo the bid specs, and we were hoping if we could get it advertised by the 5th or so of September that we would be able to open bids on or about the 28th of September. That's the update I have for you.
So, at the moment, we don't know what the new scope will be.
We do not.
Till we get the report from the architect.
So, who's going to make the determination what the scope ought to be?
Well, I'll be reviewing that with you to, once I receive something from the architect. But as of today, I've not received anything. I anticipate by the end of the week that we'll receive something, so.
Now, we've got a, we do have a end date as to when we have to have the state capital grant funds expended.
I've asked for clarification of that.
Do we know, we don't know when?
And the EMA director is reaching out to folks in Columbus to try to determine what the drawdown deadline is for that, those two capital grants.
Right, right, yeah.
They are part of the biennium budget that, I believe, expires June 30th of 2024.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And there were two separate awards, each for $400,000.
And each have been rolled over several times.
Previously, right.
Previously, so that's the real question is, is we have to make sure we get this expanded. It's pretty clear that
Right.
we need to actually spend it down.
Yes.
And that's my fear with, I guess, is we've got the correct scope, that we know what we're going to try to doing, and that we're actually going to be able to get successful bids. We only had one. We can stay within budget and be able to proceed. To have to go through the rebid process again kind of endangers, I think, maybe, I think, spending those funds in time.
I know one of the changes of the scope would be, the original bid specs called for them to stay in place, the staff to stay in place, to move over to the new building so that, once that's constructed, they can work on the existing building. I've spoken to the architect and the EMA director and said we could make temporary space available for the staff in another one of our buildings that we have available if that reduces the project cost as an effort to try to bring the project budget down, so.
Okay, so I thought I'm trying to get clear, and I had the documents, I kind of pulled down, and some of you know, I had a COVID last week, missed about most everything that was going on, and tried to catch up with what was going on. We had an executive committee meeting on Wednesday that I wasn't able to attend. So, hence, I asked about our emergency operations center. Under the current scope, is that part of the project? I couldn't understand from the documents. Or is the emergency operations center?
The EMA has moved out of the jail.
Yeah, but no, no, but that's different from, where their office is at is different from the emergency operation.
The EOC.
EOC. The EOC, is it still located at the jail, or is that being located to this location?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, all right.
That is something the board has not yet discussed until the, I mean, I would imagine, I can't speak for the whole board, that once this is completed, we need a new EOC, or if, you know, they want to continue running emergencies out of the sheriff department. But they're physically out of.
Well, I know the offices, and I guess, what's the primary purpose of the facility? Is it for the office operation as well as the storage of equipment that they have? But then you've got that, that EOC component of our emergency operation plans, what I provided that highlight, because it provides that level of support. And I even did some additional research of all the counties. Their EO, their emergency operations centers are co-located with their dispatch centers. They're not five miles away. They're typically either next door or part of. And so, if we're trying to move our emergency operations center, because you have to have landlines, you have to have, I mean, all this support equipment that's identified in our plan, if that's one component that's driving up the cost, maybe that's the one thing we say, no, we're going to keep the EOC where it's at, and then function on the staff housing, you know, offices, as well as for storage of equipment and all that other kind of stuff. But when it comes to our emergency operation plan, we keep that connectivity to the dispatch.
Oh, that's not, I mean, that's something I guess we could get on the agenda for the EMA board.
Okay.
Just because it's, the EOC has not been discussed in this, when we've been talking about, you know, the scope of the project right now.
Well, that, hence my question. I looked at all the documents, and I think it's a good question to ask. You know, I'll produce here on County Lorraine, County Richland, Ashland, Summit, Portage, Stark, Georgia, all essentially co-locate.
Do you?
And we're going to move, if we're going to move our EOC away from that primary function, given all of, all those functions under our plan, we maybe ought to be talking about that.
This is going to sound like a, this is a question I will admit that I should already know the answer to.
Okay.
Currently, with the operations at Heatherhedge.
Right.
We haven't relocated the EOC. We don't know the answer to that. Yeah, that's.
I'm not on the EMA board.
It's my understanding there's still a presence at the sheriff's building.
Yeah, and I think that's, because there's been some radio activity, and I know they've got a tower there, and so I think those two things are connected, but I didn't know the definitive answer.
So, if we had a major, like, East Palestine event, and the EOC, this emergency operation plan that we have currently in place, that is where we would locate our emergency operations center, at the jail, right? That's where we have all the equipment. That's where everybody meets. That's where all the communications is at.
Well, some of the equipment is at Heatherhedge that they would need to bring.
Well, some of the rescue equipment.
To take to.
But I meant in terms of communication equipment.
They have, they have a collection of radios there that I think go with the mobile command.
I was talking about more of the, the equipment that's identified in the ELP.
Yeah.
Emergency Operation Plan, which is basically computers auto, it's the audio visual. It's all the communication. It's the furniture. It's the stuff that if you'd have to bring the executive function and legislative function there to operate during a county, major county emergency, that everything is there, and the communications, everything is tied in, both hardwire as well as wireless and, and as well as radio. So, that, it's got all the mapping. It's got everything, so.
Would you like me to call Christina and get you on the agenda for the next meeting so we can discuss this?
I'm just asking the questions. But I guess that's, that is, that was one of the questions, is that the change of scope, or is that what was planned? I asked this question two years ago as to what the executive committee was planning on doing, and obviously never received a response.
I can tell you when I met with the architect and the emergency management director several weeks ago about the rebid process, the EOC was not discussed.
Okay, all right. So, I just, like I said, it's more for clarity that, okay, so that's not a component that's driving up the cost, then?
It's not my understanding.
Okay, good. Hence, my question is, like, I couldn't figure that out.
Yeah.
Based on the bid documents.
This has not been discussed with the bid documents.
If we're trying to relocate that, that's expensive. So, if that's one component that's driving up, then we just, all right, as long as, so I guess we need to then, the architect is identifying what components are driving up the cost that we have to be able to afford.
Correct, and I believe that's what his efforts have been spent on the last couple weeks.
And that's the, that's actually, dovetails nicely with my other question about the architect is, where are we in terms of their work up to this point? You know, are we incurring additional expense because of the rebid process?
I assume there'll be some additional architect fees associated with the rebid process, yes.
Okay.
You are not, this board is not paying those architect fees directly. The EMA board has authorized those expenses, so.
So, in the update, and I know Matt, surgeon, had been visiting some various entities. One was the Housing Network, because he's updating the emergency operation plan. So, do we know where that, that update is? Is that going to take into account, I guess, the new functions for the Heatherhedge, I would presume, right?
Could be.
Okay, all right. Just some basic questions.
I do think as we move towards the countywide advisory group meeting that will happen, presumably will happen later this year.
Right.
Now that we've got the amended agreement at the ratification level, it would be helpful probably to have some of these answers ahead of that, ahead of those discussions.
Yeah.
So, I do think this is one of those several instances where that overlap of the commissioner's responsibilities and the executive committee's responsibilities, you know, there's just enough overlap that can cause some confusion. And so, I think asking the questions and then following up, you know, to get the answers is necessary.
Well, like I said, last week I intended on, and it had a lot of these questions, like, okay, what's the plan for the rebid, and what are the functions? And obviously, having missed that, I wanted to make sure we weren't getting too, too far along in the process and not saying as to where we're going to actually bring down the costs of that, because we just don't have the money to pay the difference. I mean, we've gone from, we were hoping, I know Brian Gutson is the one that predicted there was going to be 1.4 million base, and I guess he was dead on there. So, I guess that's, that's one of those things is like, we don't have the cash to come up with the difference, so how are we going to reduce the scope?
And the architect knows the grant number, I believe.
Yes.
He knows the number.
Okay, well, but it's up to the committee to decide what's important there and what's not important there for the function. So, that's what I was asking. Okay.
So, and we have a tentative meeting set for November 15th, but we're running it by the EMA board first before we finalize the meeting.
The amended agreement requires that, the amended agreement says the commissioners can call that meeting in January annually. But if it's to be called outside of the annual process, that it gets called by the executive committee. And so, we did have that discussion at our meeting last week about getting a date scheduled. So, we had committed to look at the, kind of, the county. So we had committed to look at the, kind of the countywide calendar and November 15th seemed to be a reasonable date.
So, and that, what, did you want to talk about that, that part now or after we, I know we've got some other people?
Do you have any more questions on the building?
No, on the building, I'm done.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, either way, either way, yep.
Sure, we can move right on to that.
Oh, okay. So the question I had, sorry to be, I guess, I want to be beating a dead horse, but focus back on the EMA. But talk about the agreement and I know that, like I said, I know the committee discussed. Talk about having that organizational meeting. And I was looking at the agreement and trying to get clear. So when the advisory committee meets, essentially they're doing the, they're appointing the six or seven members of the statutory seven?
Right.
So that means they would also have to determine who the non-elected member at that time too, correct?
Yep.
The way I read it, they have their meeting, they'd have to have, and then.
And that's the, that's, that's the only, of the statutory seven, that is the only position that's selected by that advisory group as a whole.
Is that, is that true? That's not the way I would interpret it.
Because the?
Because don't, aren't they picking the two township reps?
I think the Township Association has historically nominated that.
Historically nominated, but our agreement says that the advisory council actually picks them.
Okay.
See, I'm, and I guess that's where, like I said, I'm looking at it.
We talked of having a discussion at the September Township Association meeting.
Right, okay.
To get a gauge on, you know, who's interested and nominated. But, you know, EMA will have to get ahold of Jeff Brandon to get that on his, you know, radar for the September meeting at the sheriff's office.
Right.
And I think there's a scenario where, and this was something that we, when we sent the notice, not notice, but just kind of a casual circulated an email to the BMA executive committee with the likely date. Couple open issues there. There could be a need to fill some of those, some of those roles or have discussions around who fills those roles. You know, the, we've historically had a representative of the villages, but I guess that's selected by the city itself.
Right, right. And it also says about the chief executives from each of the largest cities in Medina County. Of course, obviously it's Medina, Brunswick and Wadsworth.
Yep.
By then, well, we have resolved the difference of opinion as to who represents the chief executive of the city of Wadsworth?
Mike Lyons, and correct me if I'm repeating this, has determined that there is no alternates or that it is the chief executives.
Okay.
Correct? Isn't that your interpretation?
Yeah, well, the, the interpretation of the prosecutor's office, not to speak for them, and they're not here right now. But was, yeah, that there aren't any alternates available. The language of the statute and corresponding to our agreement is the chief executive. And there, I think there remains an open question about who that person could be from each city. I think the default interpretation would be Brunswick city manager, based on their charter. We'd be mayor of Medina and mayor of Wadsworth.
Right, okay.
But I also could foresee a scenario where a law director from a city weighs in on that with perhaps an alternative interpretation. And if their interpretation, if they're, and I'm going to draw, I want to draw a clear line here. If their interpretation is it doesn't have to be the chief executive, then we defer to the prosecutor's office and say, no, in fact, it needs to be the chief executive. But if their interpretation is this person who's not the mayor may be the chief executive, based on their interpretation of their municipal code, then I, I don't, I think that's a different story. So to say that it would definitively be the mayor is, I think, it, the law directors probably have a role to play in that.
Well, I thought we already received a letter from Tom Morris, the law director, on that issue.
He, his letter was more in the former context suggesting it would be, it would be permissible to have alternates in there. And at, on that point, we have, we have, so that was a differing opinion. Right, and we, yeah, effectively, we've said, no, the prosecutor's interpretation controls on that point. We haven't seen a letter from any law directors that say this role for purposes of our city's safety function, the chief executive is somebody other than the mayor. And, and I don't know what the grounds for the county to object to that would be if that's the interpretation of their city law director. And again, I defer that more definitive answer to the prosecutor's office.
Should this be a question we try to answer before the November meeting though? As to who the, the executive for the city, chief executive officer will be for the city? Because the, you know, you have to establish a roster according to our agreement as to who actually is on there. So that, should we not try to get that resolved before?
And I'm only hesitant, yes, it should be clear. It should be clear before the meeting. And I'm only hesitating because I think, I, for my, for my participation in these conversations, both of the executive committee and in some discussions beyond the walls of the executive committee, I feel like it has been pretty clear that the expectation is the mayor unless there's an interpretation of your city code to the contrary.
So basically, I would, ought to be communicated to the city of Wadsworth that if they have a different interpretation, they ought to, they, at least, our intents and purposes.
I think that's been communicated.
Okay, all right. They need to come across with that as soon as possible, so it could be resolved before the November meeting?
I'm not, I'm not anticipating anything in that regard. But it could just as likely come from Wadsworth or Medina. I'm, I'm kind of answering it more in the theoretical sense, which is why I don't know that it needs to be spelled out more definitively than the agreement already spells it out.
Okay, all right.
I just, I think, I think it's perhaps an oversimplification to say chief executive equals mayor because that's really probably going to be a product of the municipal code of each municipality.
The other question I have is actually one of timing for the additional beyond that statutory seven. If we're going to do an organizational meeting in November 15th, we've got an additional commissioner or according to this option, if we want somebody else. The second is the chief executive of the villages of Medina County with their option. We have new mayors, I know for sure, and Spencer, they're going to be leaving. They need to be, I guess, at least do a caucus or a meeting of those mayors to determine who they want for the village. My presumption is that would have to occur after that November 15th meeting?
I don't think, I don't think that, these are all good prosecutor questions here.
Okay.
But, but I don't, my, my reading of this is it's, it, it contemplates the appointment of the statutory seven.
Right.
And then it says up to six additional members may be appointed to the executive committee, chosen as follows.
Yeah.
I don't think that dictates that it has to happen subsequent to the advisory group meeting. It could happen prior to the advisory group meeting. It could happen subsequent to the advisory group meeting. I think it could potentially even happen at the advisory group meeting, which would be my, if somebody were asked to ask me, and I don't control how the villages operate, but if somebody were to ask me, I would say that would be a good time if you're all going to be here to maybe caucus and make that decision.
If they are mayor that has not taken office, is not officially a mayor of the village. So therefore, that's, that begs the question, if I was in Spencer and you had a brand new mayor and not being included, that could be, you know, like I said, it's more of a process question maybe than.
And that's why that meeting will typically happen in January. The thought was, we hold it in November this year. I suppose there's no reason we couldn't, the commissioners couldn't still call one in January, following that.
Well, there's actually no action needed for the advisory for that to be, because that's, that's by their right to be able to name the individual, correct?
They're meaning the chief executives of the villages?
Yeah, yeah. There's nothing in there. It's like the board of commissioners. We, we don't have to wait for the advisory to appoint that second commissioner.
And, and just like the timing isn't dictated in there.
Right.
They could appoint one at the November meeting and they could meet in January and appoint a different one.
Yes.
So, but the, the thing with, the villages presents a unique dynamic because they don't have a town, there's not a village association like there's a township association. So they don't have regular occasions of meetings. And so they're the ones I anticipate maybe will have more logistical challenges getting somebody in that spot.
But as, as we've agreed, the association is more of a nominating, particularly for this, because basically it's up to the executive committee or the advisory council to appoint the two. And then any additional township trustees would be appointed by the executive committee.
I think that's.
Because as you know, when I read and I think we had those conversations, we know there are other townships that have indicated they'd like to see a third township trustee appointed.
Right.
And that, but that, the executive committee later on could obviously make that.
Yeah, that fits into the up to three additional individuals.
Okay, all right.
Which are appointed by the executive committee.
I mean, this meeting, this first meeting is going to be, you know what I mean? Our, our introduction to this, introduction to our new system, so.
And I think there are going to be a lot of questions like this that, and the other, not to interrupt, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
But the other thing that I indicated in that, that email that I sent kind of as a follow-up to our discussion at the board meeting last week was to say, our office will kind of coordinate with the prosecutor's office to get some meat on the bone, so to speak, in terms of how these logistics are going to be handled, because there, there are a lot of new dynamics.
Hence I was, that's what I was asking the questions. I totally agree with you. And frankly, I'd nominate you to run the meeting.
I thought that would be, that would follow the role of the president, I believe.
No, no, you're doing this in November before, so therefore, and I just, no, I, I think just, I think procedurally it just makes some sense. We want to make sure that everybody has the input and the necessary appointments, that we don't have any issues that are unresolved before the new board takes over and starts to move forward with a construction project and, and kind of move EMA, you know, into the next generation, if you will, with a lot of other issues that are dealing with public safety. So that was my reason for bringing them up publicly and hopefully we get those questions answered November, by November then.
Well, and I think the, I think the name of the game between us and our local government, you know, subdivision partners is going to be flexibility and collaboration like it always is. Because if we work together, I'm sure we can, we can bridge whatever gaps we identify.
So we're going to give the, now, we've got a number of entities that, 22 have approved that we, to receive 22 out of 26. And so my presumption is we're going to give them the ones that haven't yet, give them notice that we need to receive that if they want to be included in the advisory meeting in November. Would that be?
Yes.
Accurate?
Yeah, once, and again, that, that's the presumptive date of that meeting would be November 15th, but to be, to be firmed up at the September EMA executive committee meeting. But I think if the meeting date is scheduled for November 15th, I think a reasonable deadline would be October 31st for having the agreement in hand in the commissioner's office.
Yeah, okay. That was it. That was all we had. Thanks.
Okay. Next up, we have the land swap and you're running that discussion, Steve?
Oh, I'm not sure. Why don't we have some residents here?
Your name was printed right here.
Only because I threw that on the agenda based on communication from last time and I know we've had some comments. I've not had any direct communication. I know Nate, Empec had some discussions. I know with some of the residents here regarding it. And so I, I was saying, I was asking a lot of questions as to the need for facility, why the county, the Park District is involved in a swap at all. I was looking at the property that they're wanting to acquire and I'm trying to figure out why, what are they needed for? And, but had, have we received any communication regarding?
Well, I, I talked to Nate and this is by no means a done deal. He's vetting other options. So I, I almost think this, this discussion is now, after talking to him, premature because this is not a done deal and, and he's looking at other possibilities. So I think from our perspective, it is still in the Park District board's hands before we weigh in in any way.
Yeah, I know. And it was, I think certainly for the residents bringing it forward, certainly the township trustees over in Guilford. Their resolution regarding their, their concerns, well understood if I was living over there as well. But I, I'm trying to, I know we're more like an interested party and not really have much authority here.
Because a conditional use permit would have to happen anyway should the Park District go forward. So nothing has been solidified and it, it seems like Nate has not finalized a decision or his board on this issue.
Yeah. Did he communicate as to why they want that, that particular land over there off of Wadsworth Road?
I, I didn't ask a specific for specific locations.
I mean, they joined a lot of adjoining property. Of course, the Muskingham Watershed District has that primarily because of the, well, flooding control and all, everything they've got, all the improvements they've made and the oversight. So it's not like this property is in danger of being developed. And so the question I had is like, then why does the Park District even want it? If it's not really doing anything and unless they're going to do some more park development in that area. And that was the only question I had.
Right, and like I said, when, you know, when, if they decide on their plans, I think then it's time for discussion. But this is, it's, according to him, he is vetting other options.
Okay.
That's the exact line he used.
The, and my thought on this, I guess, I tend to agree that it's, it's likely a township issue. I think, you know, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. I can't envision a scenario where our office would, would weigh in on a conditional use application or anything like that. We'd leave it to the townships to interpret their zoning.
Yes.
I, I'm a big supporter of townships having zoning and, and making those decisions because I think they're, they're best positioned to make those conclusions. But I think there's, you know, pretty clear indication from this township resolution, 2023-12, of where the township leaning on that. And so I do think having other options in the back of your pocket are probably helpful.
Yes.
So, but, but in terms of our action or specifics, I think that's probably.
We're on hold, I feel.
Yeah, I think that's the right.
I would agree.
The name of the game.
Okay, next up, we have Chris again to discuss two leases.
Which would you like to, oh, I think it's Metro Housing.
Metro Housing first.
All right, I've sent you the latest version of a draft of the proposed lease agreement between Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority and the Board of County Commissioners. This would be for occupancy, short-term occupancy of space located at 120 and 124 West Washington Street, known to us as the professional building. This would be all first floor space. The original draft I sent you was in excess of 10,000 square feet. This has been reduced to 8,886 square feet. It calls for an 18-month base lease period, beginning October 1st of this year and running through April 30th of 2025. It also provides for Metro Housing to be able to extend the lease for two six-month periods. So potentially a total lease period of 30 months. The cost that I calculated and provided to Metro Housing based on proportionate share of the estimated utility cost for the building and a per square foot cost for a base rent would be $1,998.33 per month.
I am fine with the numbers. I just, the two six-month renewals have to be our decision too. It can't just be one way. So, I mean, if, if for some reason we needed to at some point sell it for whatever reason, I want at least the two six-month options to be, we have a say in whether they're renewed. That's my stance on the, on the lease.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think nobody's looking to put them out on the street.
But we don't know what's coming.
Well, and I think that the origins of this discussion were that this would be a short-term solution. Not, I mean, you know, 30 months to me is, is short-term for, for that kind of an operation. But just to have some clarity and just the ability to say, well, we know at this point in time, the, the way that would be extended would be with some, some kind of clear light at the end of the proverbial tunnel. But if it, if it were, if they wanted a 30-month lease, I'd probably say that's fine. You know, if that's better than 24 plus 6 plus 6, to me, that's a 36-month lease. So I don't know if, if there's an adjustment to the overall term, if that makes them more comfortable, then maybe we do, do something like that. I mean, it.
But renewals aren't renewals if, in my opinion, if both parties don't have say, you know what I mean? I, I think we should at least have say in whether, at the time of renewal, whether they're renewed, because it's another year.
Oh, yeah, well, it is another year. The question is, is, we know they need to find another more permanent location. And the question comes down to, is some of that, to me, is out of their control in some ways, depending on what their alternate is.
I'm not saying that renewals wouldn't be honored. I'm just saying that we should have say.
Well, well, one way that we have a say, they need some assurances too that they're going to be able to reside there and not have to worry about going someplace else for six months before they do get the, something that's more permanent. And we know they're dealing with the city of Medina and for various reasons, it takes a lot longer to get the city of Medina in an agreement. Just as of last night, when you jumped to the other lease, how long we've actually been, we gave them a May 30th, if you may remember. The idea, we wanted to have everything complete and look, we're now approaching Labor Day. So things take a little bit longer. So, things take a little bit longer sometimes.
I'm saying I'm fine with it, I just would like, it's my opinion, I would just like added that the commissioners also get a say on the renewals.
As a practical matter, and I know the nature of this job, none of us can guarantee that we'll be here when these decisions happen in the future, and I think that's where some of their uncertainty comes from, but as a practical matter, the difference between 30 and 36 is almost negligible to me, because if we're in the 30th month and they need three more months or six more months, we're not going to kick them out to go to another place.
Yeah, but to be fair, when this was first sold, it was not even close to three years.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, yeah.
But also.
When it was first broached, to me, it was a very short-term thing.
But ultimately, ultimately, I think if it's, if the period is 30 months or 24 months, what that does is dictates the timeline where they start to come to us or get nervous about the timing of their other project. So, if we have a 36-month lease, we might hear from them in the 32nd month saying, hey, we're going to need additional time. If we have a 30-month lease, we're probably going to hear from them in the 24th month saying they need more time, and that gives us the ability, or the board the ability, to kind of adapt to it. And that, it isn't an intention to kick them out, and I trust that future boards would see that the exact same way.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of timing and keeping options open, that's how I look at it. And that's why I'd prefer to see, if it's going to be their unilateral control, I'd prefer it to be a shorter timeframe, that's my, kind of how I size it up.
And again, I have no problem with the renewals, as long as the commissioners, you know, do get, if future commissioners, whoever they are, do get a say.
I believe the Metro Housing Board feels they need a commitment of at least 24 months. So, I think.
Which we have in the current draft?
No, we have a commitment of 18 months.
Okay, oh, 18 plus 6 plus.
Well, their draft contains a commitment of up to 30 months.
Yeah.
Based on their determination. But I think minimally, they're looking, from a comfort standpoint, to be able, I mean, this whole project is based on the fact that you've provided $1.3 million for a homeless shelter.
Yes.
To be located in the administrative, current administrative offices of Metro Housing. So, this is obviously, and as you know.
Why don't we just change it to a 24-month lease with one six-month renewal, but the renewal is at the option of either party or?
I think that's acceptable.
Okay, I ought to give them the 30 months, but that's me.
Well, it is 30 months.
Straight up. Well, no, I meant without going back and forth, who's.
But 30 becomes.
I'm willing to give them a fixed, what they would need, in order to compete, complete this project and be able to move some security forward, knowing that they're going to have to relocate within that period of time.
Well, Chris just said 24 was good.
Well, no, their original was 30 months.
Well, up to them.
Up to them, yeah, yeah, that's.
So, the base rent period is still 18 months.
But I'm telling you, I was fine with their proposal, so whatever you think they're agreeable to, that's fine.
I'm not sure they want a 30-month base rent period, I think, you know, they're looking for 24 months and then the ability to go six months.
Say yes or no, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Based on.
But they want the exclusive right for the six months.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the right would be exclusive either, I think they want the unilateral right, without the board's.
Without this board.
Yeah.
Well, exclusive.
I think, yeah, I like 24 better with the understanding that if I'm sitting here, there's going to be no scenario where we would deny them that last six-month extension if they needed it.
It's actually a stronger lease for them versus the 18 months, correct?
I don't know about that, I think it's really about how much they have control over it.
Well, I think it works from their standpoint the same, but I think.
So, right now, we've got agreement, 24 months with a six-month extension, based upon mutual agreement of the commissioners and.
That would be a revision that we would.
Right, okay.
Possibly send to them.
All right, all right.
Is that acceptable at this point?
I think so.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you wish for me to proceed along those lines?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next up, the courthouse city lease.
As you know, there have been ongoing negotiations to put together a lease that would enable the city of Medina, well, the Medina Municipal Court, to relocate from their current location to the 1969 County Courthouse located on the square. That lease has been under Medina City Council review and had previously gone through two readings with votes for passage. Last night was the third and final reading, and the city council approved it 7-0 to execute the lease. I believe there's a 30-day waiting period, once that third and final vote had been taken. So, at that point, the 30-day period, it will be signed by the city and then sent here. You will still need to formally, by resolution, approve that lease, and then the city is anticipating, moving forward with their RFP or RFQ process for architect selection.
Okay.
I just want to thank Aaron, I watched on Facebook or Medina TV last night, and Aaron did a very good job representing the Board of Commissioners' position on that, I know we had a letter of concern that was expressed by one of the library board, libraries, Law Libraries Association, and I think he answered the questions very well, and just thank everybody for moving forward. Like I said, I'm disappointed, it took a lot longer than, I think it probably should have, but what the heck, that's the process, and so they've got a 30-day period, and we're able to move forward, and I'm glad that that's finally going to happen.
And with, on the law library issue there, it does present some issues that need to be addressed now that there is an approved lease, and I kind of took the position, I think we've kind of taken the position that that was a dynamic that wasn't in existence until the lease was approved, it's been approved by the city, so at the point where we take action to approve it, there will be some additional moves that'll need to be made. And so, I did even last night reach out to representatives from both of the Law Library Resources Board and the Law Library Association to let them know that now that this lease has been approved by the city, you know, to expect to hear from us here shortly, Chris and I have already had conversations this morning, and so we're trying to put together some solutions, we've certainly heard the concerns of the law library, and I think both short and long-term, you know, our goal is to come up with a solution that results in minimal interruption to the activities there, because the law library does perform a necessary service, both for our members of our bar and our public defenders, and, you know, people who provides access to justice, so it's an important operation, we certainly don't ignore that, but I think we've, I think we're going to be able to put some things together that are going to, that are going to work for everybody, so.
Great.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have the Ohio land banks.
Oh, wow, okay. Yeah, I put in a packet, and was, like I said, intended to bring that up last week, but the Ohio, as part of the CCAO Association that I conference attended, was on economic development and a big section on the land bank, and there had been some recent changes, and I know that the county had looked at a land bank at one point in time and had passed a resolution, and then rescinded it shortly thereafter, that's like about four years ago, I think, three, four years ago, and, but has, a lot of things have changed since then, and when we look at the growth of land banks in Ohio and its use, expanded this out of 60, out of 88 counties, 66 have land banks, every county except Coggin, Medina County and Northeast Ohio have land banks, there are actually as many rural land bank, county land banks, as there are urban county land banks. They have a functionality that's just more than just in the inner cities and older communities. In addition to a number of authorities that they do have, the state, and I think part of that presentation, I thought was pretty convincing, actually, in addition to funding that they have access to, which is usually counties also have access to, there's an additional program called Welcome Home Ohio that the legislature put in the current budget that only land banks themselves are entitled to, about $150 million, that have to do with basically being able to go acquire, revitalize, rehabilitate, to remediate all those kinds, and then put it back on the market and accomplish those programs. So, what I'm proposing, and like I said, there's a bit, not only the property tax exemptions, there's political subdivision immunity, there's environmental liability immunity, and there's actually one project, we're working now with the Tony Capretta's office, the Yost-Sinoco property and the city of Medina, kind of indirectly, that if we had a land bank, we'd actually been able to do this, they would have been able to do it years ago, but we're now trying to work around that, and it's a little bit more complicated, but this is, at least now, a land bank, if it was in existence, would be much more streamlined, a lot easier to do it, wouldn't take years to accomplish pretty much the same kind of thing. So, what I'm proposing is that we take a look at this publicly, much more in a way that involves a lot of the various parties and people that would be interested in this. I know Habitat for Humanity, last year, we identified parcels that they'd be interested in, we asked the prosecutor how we would be, they would be able to acquire those, we still not received an answer, how the ability for a taxing entity like us would be able to get that as part of a, you know, they're tax delinquent, we can use it for purposes, but there's no direct connect to something like a Habitat for Humanity for those projects. So, they'd be interested, I know Economic Development Corporation looked at this last year, so, and I started to talk to some of the, our community city planners and as well as economic development directors, and say, why don't we put together a group, maybe bring these people in, start talking about it, and see what the possibility, what we ought to examine it, certainly since the laws changed in many regards, and also the funding for some of this is now being much more directed for these land banks to be much more active.
So, would we like to put it on the agenda for a meeting in, you know, maybe next month, and invite the auditor, the treasurer, and maybe Bethany to the discussion, so we can hear their thoughts on it, because we did reverse last time, because both the auditor and treasurer felt that we only really had a handful of parcels that would, you know, and with, you know, the requirements and the reporting and everything, we only had a handful of properties that would have qualified, so I would like, you know, maybe in a month to get it on their calendars, to invite them to come to this discussion.
Would we want to do it more like in a task force, or as a group, I mean, as opposed to the commissioners' meeting, just asking?
I guess I would love to know more before we even go to the task force route, just because my, and I, and like I say, learning more, because my big concern with these kinds of things, I'm a big proponent of private investment, I think that's one of the things we do well in this community, and I'm not saying that that happens at the expense of this, I just need to learn more to get comfortable with it, because I, what I'd hate to see happen, you know, we've got a project like the Farmers Exchange is a great example, you know, south of the square, where that was revitalized and done with private investment, which I think results in.
Huge public investment.
In.
State grants, oh my god.
Okay.
So, it was, actually, just by, just by the public, private alone, would not have accomplished.
Well, and I should clarify, I guess, yeah, private, but also in the absence of a land, in the absence of a land bank. So, we found the way to get the public money routed to those kinds of projects in the absence of it, and I think ultimately, you know, if it's, and this is like I said, when I say I want to learn more, I want to make sure that those things aren't going to go away, or that the first line of defense becomes, well, let's find a way for the public financing to do it, a project that would still otherwise get some, you know, private investment. The marriage of those two things, I'm all for.
Right, and I think too, remembering that the laws have changed, likewise, that was pre-COVID versus post-COVID, as well as the states now putting more money into land banks for specific functions.
Yep.
It makes sense to reexamine it.
Yeah, and I'm all for, if that means we've got an avenue to more state money coming up this way.
Right.
It's a very different story too, than if it's local money, I just, I've read, and this is more casually, of some urban areas in other states where this was, you know, believed to be a panacea, and what it's done is it's actually stifled private investment, and that, to me, there needs to be a good balance of, you know, the opportunities where you deploy it, and those are things I want to learn more about.
I'd agree, and I think it really is, you're looking at specific parcels and areas and understanding why they haven't been redeveloped, why they haven't been able to come on there, and what the impediments are, and those are, I think, very community-specific, site-specific, and look at those opportunities, to say that there's no properties out there that couldn't benefit from a land bank, I think would be somewhat myopic.
I agree with that.
But I also agree that, okay, we're not going to be in the business of trying to compete against, if the private sector can do it, God bless them, they ought to, but then if we then let a number of places sit there, fallow for years, not be able to be productively used, or we've got an entity like Habitat for Humanity not be able, right now, they're in competition for, and, you know, we went to the 50th House on Sunday, they're in competition, they've got 100 people, families have already have applications in, and they're in competition for property and land, and if we're missing maybe just a couple more parcels that they could get access to, there's a couple more families that are positively impacted, and this is not, these are not gifts to them, they earn it, they basically sweat equity, their investment, they have finance plans, they have to pay a mortgage, all that, and that's the kind of things like, well, if we can help them a little bit more on the edge, let's see if there is a way to do that. And like I said, last year, we identified parcels, and there's no clear, clean way for any public entity other than the land bank to just.
That's interesting.
Be able to acquire it for that, but that's why we need to examine.
Yeah.
And do much more systematic, so maybe we could invite the land bank association, somebody to come and do a presentation, and then they could answer some questions.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, so I'll coordinate with Rhonda, and we'll get ahold of them with a date, and then.
Super.
We will invite the auditor, treasurer, and Bethany to that meeting for discussion.
Well, I know, half the equation is, we have new auditors, so maybe.
Does the Habitat list, is that publicly available, the ones they targeted, is that more of an executive?
We're the ones that gave them the list as public, it's part of that tax real, that list we get of all those vacant properties.
Right, okay.
I forwarded it to them last year, they looked at some of those parcels and said, yeah, we could use these, and as far as I know, they're still sitting there.
Yeah, well, and that was.
Not paying taxes, so, okay.
And that's the missing link from my perspective, is a year ago, they identified them, and they're still sitting there, now we've got an opportunity.
And they've been sitting for a while, so it's like, okay, maybe this is, we need to look wide.
Yep.
And I think when we looked also at the reduction in liability, even when it comes to the environmental liability, that's something the private sector can't do.
Yeah.
That's something only a public sector can do with the appropriate grants, and our Yost-Sinoco is a prime example of that, because I know Kimberly Marshall's going to be contacting your office, I talked to her yesterday, about coming in, about setting that up, to what grant source is available so they can go in there, they have underground tanks that are still in there, even though the state owns the property, it's not eligible for state funding for, until somebody assumes the liability, and fortunately, the city of Medina or the county does not want to assume liability.
Yeah, no, and filling in those blanks, that's the, I think that's the right balance, it's some of these where they become, it's the old adage, when you're a hammer, everything looks like a nail.
Right.
We're sitting on a pile of money, and let's find a way to deploy it, and that's not to say those motives are bad, but when you're deploying, you know, public funds in an environment where we've got robust private investment, I just want to make sure we're going about it the right way, so, but I appreciate you bringing it, it was completely off my radar until you mentioned it a couple weeks ago.
I mean, there's pretty conservative, I'll say, pretty conservative commissioners sitting in that meeting, you know, in Ashland County, Huron County, Richland County, all those there, and they're pretty business, pro-oriented business and private sector, are saying, why don't you have one, they're great, they're the best thing we've had, and so it's like, okay.
Nope, that's good here.
That's the time to listen, go, okay.
Right.
We need to make sure that we didn't miss the boat, a couple years ago, maybe we were just premature, just didn't do it, now we just need to evaluate and say, well, changes in law, changes in funding, we ought to be looking at it, so that's.
Well, we'll look at the land bank people first for a date, and then we will invite the other parties, and we will have another discussion on this.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so, next up, I went to a presentation about a month ago at the library on the hearing loop possibilities for government buildings, and then I had talked to Judge Hudson about it, and he reached out to me last week, and he said that he did have an instance last week where the hearing loop would have been very, very helpful in one of his trials. So, with your permission, I have two companies that I'd like to get quotes from for our courtrooms over at the new courthouse building, and I just wanted to see if you were okay, I'll bring quotes.
Yeah, and I was, there's also the, I don't know who the company is, maybe, we did have Over Office World or Daltsoil hearing loop installed, let's check and see, you know, if they're around.
That may be one of the two companies I have.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know, I don't know off the top.
But I just wanted to, your permission to go ahead with getting some quotes.
Oh, I think so, and the idea is, in terms of funding, it would be qualified for ARPA for those purposes.
ARPA, because it's a disability, and so, we do have some ARPA funds left that I believe would be able to completely cover it, so I will move forward with those quotes. The next thing I have, Brian had.
I had one other question on that.
You go.
But we have, yeah, we're confident though that the ARPA will cover the full install over there, because we do have. the full install over there. Because we do have, and, okay, well, then, we have that extra courtroom if we.
Did you see his head go up?
I didn't. But if he's nodding, if he's saying yes, I know the answer's yes. Great. I'm going to learn to take yes for an answer.
Okay. So Brian had sent us an email requesting whether or not we wanted a table at the senior supremo events. And I'm a yes. Are you guys a yes for that?
Sure.
Okay. So Rhonda instructed Brian to go ahead and register for that table. Okay, do either of you have anything else? Okay. Any of the other departments have anything? No? No? I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll. Hampli?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.